The following subject matter will be discussed, discussed with the stakeholders about the Soldiers Home designation and development ongoing. And before we go on, I ask Mr. Clark if you take the roll call.
Councilor Cooper, Councilor Garcia, Tenere. No. Council Robinson?
Here.
Councilor Taylor?
He has an ARPA meeting, he won't be able to make it.
Be not. Council Lopez?
He has a vacation.
Councilor Melinda Vega-Maldonado? Councilor Zaneda?
Here.
Councilor Brown?
There.
Councilor Vito? Councilor Nerlens de Jesus? And Councilor Judy Garcia?
Has joined the meeting.
There are four members present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman. So officials invited to this subcommittee today, members of the city councilor, city manager, Tom Ambrosino is here, and then youth planning director, John Asam, John is here. Penrose is here. Members of the historic commission, anyone from the historic commission available?
Online?
Online. Thank you. If you want to state your name for us, we just make sure we have that for the record.
Alex Bolcarso.
So Alex. Okay, and all other residents are invited to this meeting.
Just to be clear from D C A M, so you know Ashley Emerson.
What is it?
Ashley Emerson.
Ashley Emerson. Like college, Mr. Col-.
Yes, like the college, exactly.
Ashley, okay, thank you for being here today. So again, this meeting was called to get an update on what's going on at the Soldiers Home, where we've met in the past, and we just wanted to get an update. We're at the presenters today, if you would just give us an update, introduce yourself as you come to the mic again, and just speak as clearly as it is being recorded, and we'll let you talk.
Great, we're actually gonna have Ashley start off.
Okay, got it.
So again, I'm Ashley Emerson, I'm with the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. Can everyone hear me okay? Just kind of nod if you can hear me this. Okay, thank you. Again, I'm with the Office of Real Estate in D C A M, and as you're aware, we're looking to redevelop the domiciliary campus, the Soldiers Home in Chelsea. Through that process, there has been a selection made of a proposal, and we have a provisional designation agreement with the developer Penrose, and they're here today to give you a sense of what their proposal includes. We are in preliminary stages, this is a time where they are doing some due diligence on campus, and seeing what is still feasible from their proposal, we go all of it. And I will now introduce Charlie Adams from Penrose.
Great, thank you. Did everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. So I'm just gonna start off a quick little introduction. Do I do the, do I just click on this to advance the slides, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I just hit the, okay. Great, so we're here, the idea is, to be informal here, we're gonna, as Ashley said, we're getting started on the project. It's something we're really excited about, something we're passionate about. We're just scratching the surface of how this is all gonna play out, it's very complex. But we want to take this opportunity to meet with you, tell you a little bit about who Penrose is, a little bit about what our plans are, and I'm gonna have Carmen Chung, who's the project manager for this deal, walk you through the bulk of that, but I just was gonna start off by talking a little bit about our vision and who Penrose is. Can I do the next slide? Super, thank you. So basically, you know, our approach to the Soldiers Home is, you know, our promise is we're really committing to ensuring that all the residents will have a place at the Chelsea Soldiers Home. That's our vision for the place, it's a place that's been cherished and nurtured over a long period of time. It's a great resource that the state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has, to give a quality of life to our residents, and what we're trying to do is come in and help take that vision that's been there for another 100 years and carry on for another 100 years, because the buildings are tired and old and it needs to build, but that's really what we're trying to do, to have this be a long-term investment for the veterans who served our country and lived here in the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. Perfect, just gonna give you a sort of a flashback who our team is, this is just a fraction of the team. Obviously, we're from Penrose, we're an owner-manager, a developer of multifamily housing, we can talk a little bit about that. But myself, Carmen, and Ryan will be at the front end of the planning and execution of the redevelopment project up at the Soldiers Home. We have a great architecture team that we've worked with, led by Philippe Saug, do a lot of work with them, Niche Engineering is a very well-established engineering firm here in the country, sorry, in the Commonwealth, and Boston in particular, and Chelsea, and knows a lot about the site and do a lot of work, so we're happy to have them on the team. We brought in a landscape architect for this, we don't always do that for all our deals, but there are such great opportunities here to really bring the landscape into the overall plan for the campus. Then we brought in Charlie Quatrell, and they are firmly used other places. Obviously, this is a historic renovation, there's gonna be a lot of historic issues and things to deal with. We're gonna go for, to attach credits at both the federal and state level, and so we're working with the group, it's our historic consultant, P A L, who's done a lot of work with before, really knows how to help navigate through that. And of course, last but not least is our management company. Not only will we own and develop the site, but we also are the long-term property managers. What you don't see on the slide is a social service provider, which we will have, and we're in the process of working through that. And there's gonna be a really robust service plan here at the community, so. Talk, next slide, please. So a little bit about Penrose and who we are. We've done a fair amount of veterans' developments across our portfolio. We're right now in 20 states and District of Columbia. About almost 20,000 units at this point over our period of history. We have our headquarters in Philadelphia, and we have regional offices like the one we have here in Boston, Baltimore, Atlanta, and several other locations. But just keeps you sort of a sampling of some of the veterans' work that we've done throughout our history. And the one that's most recent is the Dover Veterans Slide on the left-hand side. Or actually, Ben Salem is actually even more recent. Next slide, please. So really, sort of three components to how we approach things, it's really about buildings, places, and spaces, and people. This is sort of giving you a sense of our preservation of history, we've done a lot of work with historic renovation. Gives you a sampling of some of the units that we've done over our almost 50-year history. We've done 46 different rehabilitation projects, we're very familiar with historic renovation. 2,300 units. The ones I want to draw your attention to are the two in the bottom left-hand corner and right-hand corner. Those are the ones that are right here in Massachusetts. Carmen is actually working on both of those transactions. The one on the left is a former school that was renovated, we tore part of it down and rebuilt for new. That's a senior development that is just completing construction now. And the building on the right is one you may have heard about, it's just here in Boston. It's the William R. Rogers School, it'll be the first LGBTQ-friendly deal in all of England. It's a 100,000 square foot middle school that we're preserving entirely. And the team that we've working with on both of these is the same team that we're working here with on Chelsea Soldiers Home. Yes, sir?
Just a footnote, I graduated from Burton here.
Did you really?
In high pop.
Yes.
Yeah, wow. All right, we're gonna make sure we get that, we get you on the list, so we should be.
It's a minimal.
You're a grower, I think.
We're making, we're making, we're making sure you get invited.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it makes the whole month, it makes the mother.
Yeah, I graduated from there.
That's incredible, that's cool. Next slide, please. So as I said, it's not just about the buildings, it's also about places. You know, we really try to, placemaking is an intercomponent of what we do. This is a fantastic opportunity for us, right? We could not be more excited about the opportunity to create a place on this campus. So this is exactly the type of deal that really inspires us, that gets us excited about doing this kind of work. And there are such great opportunities for placemaking on the Soldiers Home campus, it's such a large community. Carmen will comment about that later on in the presentation. Next slide. Ultimately, at the end of the day, though, we're a mixed income, affordable hospital, but we're really cool about the people, right? And so, again, nothing speaks more to helping people than on this particular deal. Being able to get back to the veterans that gave so much for us is really what ultimately motivates us to really be wanting to do this transaction. So Penrose invests a lot of time and effort in supporting our residents. We have a supportive services staff in-house that oversees a lot of our supportive services. And over the last couple of years, we actually established a foundation, and then out of that grew a COVID relief fund, where we were able to help a lot of our residents that needed help getting through the last two years. Next slide. So I'm gonna stop there and turn it over to Carmen, she's gonna sort of walk you through what we're trying to accomplish at the Soldiers Home.
Great, thanks, Charlie. So as Ashley said earlier, very much in the early stages of thinking through the site and what we want to do. Before we were even selected, we actually had never been inside the buildings, because the state, the Commonwealth is being very careful about the residents' health and COVID, have very strict COVID restrictions, so we're slowly getting to know the buildings. But in our initial take, these are our main goals for the project. With Chelsea Soldiers Home. Next is kind of creating gardens and open space. One of the things that our landscape architect wanted to create is making sure that there are open spaces that are for our residents, but also welcome the larger Chelsea community to also be a part of the community. There's also, the site currently kind of sits on a hill, and there are a lot of connections between the streets that are.
Has joined the meeting.
Really, things that can really help improve the site. Because right now, there's a lot of underground tunnels that help connect the buildings, so there might be less street activity than we would normally see if folks were, have a beautiful landscape to kind of interact with. Thirdly is our commitment to supportive services. Obviously, there's a lot of services being provided to the veterans now. We want to make sure that as we transition and that all the veterans continue to have the services they need to succeed in a very new living arrangement. Because currently, they're all single-room occupancy units with no bathrooms, no kitchens. And we will be providing studios, one bedrooms, two and three bedrooms. And it's a very different lifestyle that we want to make sure that all the veterans can adjust and transition to, and. And then lastly is honoring our veterans' sacrifice in history, so this is a 100% veterans' preference project. So that is a main, a primary focus of this. So next slide. So the first thing that our architects did when they were envisioning what they would do here is they drew inspiration from a lot of these historic photos. The Crest Ave, you can see, hasn't really changed significantly, and we want to make sure we preserve that look and feel. On the right, you kind of see how the topography of the site lends itself to kind of landscapes that are kind of sloped and winding, that could be good walking paths. We want to kind of recreate that, bring back some of these things that are part of the history of the site. Next slide. So these are current pictures of the site, I'm sure folks are familiar with. But there's a lot of variability in the type of architecture, the era that they were built in, and that's one of the challenges that we're facing to how to preserve these and also bring these also up to the modern day. Next slide, please. So this is just the rendering of Crest Ave, and it kind of pretty much mimics what we see in that historic photo. You'll see in a site plan that I'll show later that we are proposing very, very minimal demolition. We are trying to preserve basically almost all of the buildings on the site and adding some additions. Going back to kind of talking about creating open spaces and gardens, one of the ideas is also to create this plaza that will kind of create more activity on the street. In the background, you see the letters V M A C, it stands for Veterans Museum and Art Center. That's our proposal for the power plant. Once we transition all the buildings from kind of steam power to electric, that power plant will no longer serve its old use, and in thinking about new use for it, that's an idea we have for what could help enliven and also create, I guess amenity for the veterans and also amenity for the larger Chelsea community. In the white box there, you also see it's a proposed new construction that's two stories that would be a cafe that could be better run, and the hope of all this is just to create street activity. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan, and our current thinking is that we're trying to split this in approximately four phases. Because one of our priorities is to make sure that all the veterans who are on site now never have to relocate off of the site. So we are making sure that while we are working on one portion of the site, that there will be somewhere on the current Soldiers Home campus for them to temporarily relocate to, and that they will move into the completed buildings once that's done. So you can see here that there are some additions we're proposing to the Sullivan Building, the Kebbell Building, and a new connector that we're proposing to make that two-story building that's next to the connector, to create an elevator access, because there's no elevator currently in the laundry building, which is that two-story building. So, and there are some town halls we propose on the corner of Summit Ave. And, but largely, we have proposed to preserve all the buildings, and we're working closely with the Commonwealth to figure out what phasing makes the most sense. And we're gonna prioritize vacant buildings to minimize disruption as much as possible. So this is some more of the landscaping plan that our landscape architect proposed. One of the things is a Soldiers Home Park at the corner that we're really hoping will create a place that will invite large residents of the large greater Chelsea community and the community around here to come to the site and interact, because we're hoping that there will be playgrounds there so that families can interact with our residents. On the Sullivan, you can see right now that's just kind of built up landmass that you can't really walk across. So we're hoping to create some sloped walkways there that can be more inviting for residents. So just to talk a little bit about supportive services. On the slide that Charlie showed earlier, we have a vice president of supportive services who is part of our property management company, who's affiliated with the development company. And she heads up, all the supportive service coordinators are on all of our sites. And one of her big initiatives over the past few years is to make sure that it's not just the service coordinators who are providing services, it's all our staff, our property management staff, our maintenance staff. Everyone needs to be trained in supportive services and mental health and all these things so that, because they're the ones that might be walking along the hall cleaning up and noticing things. So it's making sure that it's all our staff are trained in providing, noticing things and providing services to our residents. So one of the key, I guess, amenities that we're hoping to provide to the veterans is this Veterans Resource Center. The impetus behind this is to create a more of a one-stop shop so that veterans don't have to go to Boston, go to X Y Z office building in order to get their services. So to create a space where folks can come and the service providers can come to the Soldiers Home, to provide their services on-site to minimize kind of the traveling that folks have to do. And this is just our first shot at figuring out what makes sense in this Veterans Resource Center. And we put wellness room here for potential doctors' visits, computer lab for training, multipurpose room, fitness room, and a kitchen. So as I said, this is, we're very much in the early stages, we're still studying the building. We met with, we had a town hall with residents at the Soldiers Home, and we'll plan on going back on every kind of, right now, I think the goal may be on a quarterly basis to make sure that they understand that we're here, and we're here to listen to their concerns and make sure that they know that they will have a place to stay throughout the development and after redevelopment. We're kind of meeting with the city council, meeting with John, and kind of doing a lot of information gathering. And then one of the key things for this project as a historic project is getting kind of state and federal historic approvals. So those are kind of our kind of immediate next steps over the next couple of months. So that's our presentation.
Thank you, Carmen.
Mr. Chair, I'd just add, I think someone that may have joined us, I'm not sure maybe she fell off, but we have Secretary Poppy, I think I saw when it was, she went to the secretary of veterans' chairs. She's also in the group here.
Okay, great, welcome, Madam Secretary.
Sorry, are you guys also with the bow?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say something, Madam Secretary?
No, I was just coming to listen to the presentation, but thank you very much. I hope you appreciated what you have seen and the plans for the future housing for the veterans at the Soldiers Home and veterans in the future.
And welcome back home, the Chelsea. Okay.
I miss you.
Thank you, thank you kindly. John, would you like to say a few things before I open up to our faculty officials? Because I know they spoke and there's been a lot of conversation going on with yourself, and you know, maybe you have a few points you want to share?
The conversation would be because I serve as the DA for the Historic Commission. The state has signed a agreement with us to the Historic Commission to help participate in this redevelopment process. We participated by reviewing the proposals that were at the state we see, and we provided comments on each of them. It's a much impressive, we're allowed to write those comments. This will, although the state is exempt from zoning this, the state has agreed to go through a zoning process on this, so this will be a public process as a property development, and I'll continue to work with the team.
Okay, and I'm sure that with the Mass Historic Commission, they have some concerns about what's being done around that, you know, plan. So we keep an eye, keep our focus to that. Okay, Mr. Manager, would you like to say a few words?
No, I'll wait till the questions.
Okay, we also have Councilor Large, who also resides in the district in where the proposals taking place, and we also have a few councils online. Council President Roy Alveda and District Council Judy Garcia. But we'll start in-house with Council Robinson, if you have any question.
Sure do, actually, I am a Vietnam veteran. I see that most of this project is gonna be a gut rehab to a lot of the buildings?
Yes, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, you've been in the buildings. The, I mean, as Carmen said, one of the issues now is that they're S R releases, and we're trying to create permanent housing with a bathroom and kitchen, and so that'll lead to.
Like they did next door at the hospital?
I'm sorry?
Like what they did next door at the hospital, maybe?
It is a different style, yes. Less of a ward style and more of, even maybe with that independent bathroom.
The idea was the outside would look the same.
Right, that's right.
Fixed up.
Is it gonna be?
I'm sorry, Councilor, if you could speak just a little louder, we just want to make sure the audience also.
Is it gonna be 100% veterans or it's gonna be veterans' preference?
So it'll be a veterans' preference, and so, so what that, basically, that means that if that ever shows up, you know, that there's available, you can get it, right?
Is there any particular reason why it can't be 100% veterans?
Well, there are housing issues, with the work on housing funding. Secondly, it has to be a preference, but we are hoping that we can actually open it up on veterans.
And what is gonna be the makeup of the bedroom sizes?
Yeah, so we're, we have.
Yeah, so in our proposal, it's about 248 units, of which 20 are studios, 169 are one bedrooms, 55 are two bedrooms, and four are three bedrooms.
You said 55 are two bedrooms?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four, three, thank you, Consul.
And I saw on the one of the slides where where Warren Avenue had townhouses lined up, I kept hearing from various people that you were gonna plan it for sixteen units there?
Yeah, so so one of the, so that that parcel is is sort of off of the campus, right? And so one of our sort of our design things we were thinking about is that that parcel should be relating more to the surrounding neighborhood in terms of the architectural style than the buildings on campus, particularly that's also in a vacant lot, right? So that's the one place where there can be some reconstruction. So our initial thought, and you know, this is you'll get the the community feedback, but the initial thought was that those units should blend in with the other units that are on the street and it's that that's the concept, is to have those units kind of look like the other units.
Yeah, in the current proposal, it's four townhouse buildings and it's a total of sixteen units.
Sixteen units?
So four in each building.
But those will all be rental, all the, they're all rental units.
Okay, so there's no homeownership connected to the project?
Ground, it's a ground lease with the state, so.
Okay. Um I know it's early in the uh design, but has there been a uh traffic study looked at?
We have not commissioned a traffic study yet, no.
Okay, cause a lot of neighbors have asked me if there was a traffic study done, um yeah. They did touch upon how much open space there would be for the project?
Yes, do you have, do you quote a number?
I don't remember.
No, um.
I'm sure we kind of go through the package of zoning.
Yeah, multiple, I mean, the concept really is to try to open up some of the space, right? Want to keep the existing buildings, probably sort of house them down, create some open space. And really to pick the place where there is some some land now to actually really activate that, as you're going to say. Sometimes there's a greenhouse out there, those are ones before, we're gonna try to bring it back, create some gardens, some memorials, yeah.
And I'm pleased to see that you are gonna address the social service component.
Oh, yeah, well, that's that's in the, that's in the heart of the of the offer, right? I mean, the rest, the veterans are getting services now. And that's, you know, centerpiece of the whole proposal is that Veterans Resource Center and it actually is the sort of, is the center of the campus.
And if the project gets started, how many years will it take for it to be finished?
Um how many years would it take to be finished? So we're looking at at four phases, right? So you know, phase, the phase will take a while, so once it gets, let's go through zoning, right? And then we have to get financing. Uh usually, once the, once the financing is lined up, it probably takes six, eight months to to get into, to actually start construction. And then my guess is it's probably, you know, fifteen months scheduled for each of the phases, so. Um there's, you know, if we could do the phases not necessar- you know, multiple phases at the same time, we'll try to look to do that. We want me to be really sensitive to the folks that are living there now, to try and, you know, work around them. And so it's really gonna be dictated by, you know, the, the length of time will be dictated by the number of meetings the residents are there, the most common.
Okay, that was, that's pretty much my last question.
Okay, so in real time, that's close to three years from go to go?
A little bit more than.
Maybe a little bit longer, there's, we're talking about four phases.
Okay, four, okay, great. So also I just wanna recognize that we have um Consul um Vega Maldonado and we did have Consul DeHason, yeah, I'm sure she'll be back, but I just also wanted to recognize those two Consuls who have joined us. Uh we um now have Consul uh President Roy Alveda, if you have that que- question, so you have the mic?
Uh thank you, uh Vice President Calvin Brown. Um my first question is, I actually did not get um through the presentation, any sort, if I missed it, an apartment? And I think I saw um townhouses. Um so can you just give a better description of total count of apartments and such and what are we looking at from compared to present number of apartments, people to potentially how many, uh how much is the increase in population going to be in this area?
So, sure, um I think the current capacity of the site uh is supposed to be three hundred, there are currently about a hundred twenty-nine residents who are living there. Um and in the uh proposal, we have approximately two hundred forty-eight total units proposed. Um of which twenty are studios, a hundred sixty-nine are one bedrooms, fifty-five are two bedrooms and four are three bedrooms. Uh the townhouse units uh are within this uh two hundred forty-eight. Uh there's four townhouse buildings, uh and those are about sixteen units.
Close.
Yeah, sixteen, each one is four, each townhouse is four units.
And what is the, I guess, unit to number of part uh ratio count?
Uh so right now, uh there are two hundred, with the two hundred forty-eight units, uh we have approximately a hundred seventy-one uh parking spaces planned, it's a ratio of point six nine.
So it doesn't meet uh local parking requirements as as it was presented?
Uh I, we haven't done a full zoning analysis yet, but um that is uh one of our next steps.
Okay, and um while this the state project, this would still fall as a special permit under our uh zoning laws, given that this is a, can you answer that question?
It would fall under a planned development, uh which uh could be described into a special permit, yes.
So um it, so granted under special permit, so how does that want our parking restrictions that uh anybody seeking um special permits and and does not be, you know, and has parking, not enough parking, uh not uh be allowed to participate in the city resident parking program?
Uh that would be, that regulation would be applicable here.
Okay, so people who are living there, who do not mind parking off-site would not be able to get a resident sticker and park somewhere on the hill?
Right.
Okay, um as part of the planning, given the amount of units and such, um what uh traffic mitigation is being proposed by this project? Uh what does your traffic count say, uh given how many uh cars are going up and down? Um you know, the hill from all different avenues and such, what are we looking for at on a local basis and what are you, what is the project proposing to help mitigate that?
So we haven't completed a traffic study yet, the, I guess, if that is a concern, the goal of this meeting is to get feedback and get concerns uh out from the city council, so uh if that's something you would like us to address, we'll we'll um.
Yeah, that that'll be part of the, that'll be part of the zone, when we come back from the zone, we will have to go a full round traffic study and and do all that. As Carmen said, we're, you know, we're still scratching the surface of these, we've we're still trying to figure out what the buildings really can kind of do, what the buildings are telling us we could actually put there, so.
Okay, well, I I'm just raising this because these are the typical concerns when any project is proposed. Uh number one, traffic count, number two, parking impact, and I wanted to make, uh you know, uh figure out if this applies and um you know, whether or not residents in the area will have to be concerned that um they're, you know, the new residents and neighbors, if they have cars, I don't even know if there will be an impact of number of cars and such. Uh but if they're going to be uh seeing uh, you know, an influx of new cars in the, you know, parking on the street, so it's just that parking is, I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, uh we we appreciate it, we know, we know a lot to deal with this parking and we'll, we'll work to figure it out. And any kind of traffic mitigations.
Can you go over a little bit about the open space and how um this, what the planning is? Um how accessible it will be to the residents of the hill uh and not just the residents within the proposal itself?
Well, that that's, that's, I'm just talking, we, we, you wanna put the plan back up and show? One of the, I'm glad you you talked about, cause I don't think we we really, we kind of talked about that, you know, was going through our proposal pretty quickly. One of the things, or one of our goals here really is, is with the communities up there now, feels a little isolated, right? It's up there on the hill, it's it's kind of a community in itself. What we wanna try to do is 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 make sure that the, that the veterans know that this is their community, their home, but to have the outside community invited into it. So one of our our thoughts and ideas, as we were thinking about these um green spaces and these open spaces, and Carmen gave you a little more in details, is finding ways to bring them attractive to the rest of the community, right? So, you know, a young family on a Sunday afternoon says, hey, let's go up to the self, Choltey Soldier's Home and walk around the campus and play on the playground, right? That's, that's the, that's sort of the vision that we have and that's what our landscape architect is kind of, that's sort of the back of their mind and thinking about as they're planning. Like, definitely.
Yeah, I I guess one thing we would say is that even though uh this is, the site is not necessarily it's not a public parcel of land, we're treating places like the soldier's home park on the right here, there's not gonna be gates, there's not gonna be fences, uh we are going to maintain it, um but it's kind of a public amenity. Um so all the green spaces here, we we want this to be kind of integrated with its neighbors. So we're, that's not our goal, our whole goal here is to make sure that all of these are kind of available to be used um by the greater kind of community nearby also.
Carmen, I just wanted to add that um when the CLC is completed, the Quigley Building will come down and there is a park proposed for that space as well, but you can't see that on this proposal because that's um being built by D C A M, so just to keep that in mind for open space in the area.
Is that also gonna be part of the parking lot up there?
The parking and the um and the all of the landscaping and the civil will come back after the Quigley Building comes down.
So uh uh the Consuls who are on, I wanted to give them an opportunity to answer or ask some questions, uh they've since uh tuned out for a moment, but I I'll have a question and if they come back, we'll get them right into. Are you, uh, Mr. President?
No, I have one more, last one. Um one of the, one of the concerns here, and I just wanted to bring it up, I'm sure that uh planning and zoning may ask the same questions, but uh some of the resent, some of the uh concerns with the residents on the downhill side is about uh runoff, particularly the area that they're showing where the townhouses are. Uh water runoff towards the back to the homes that are on, I believe it's Prospect. Um so I want, yeah, so I wanted to make sure that uh whatever's built in that parking lot um has an address that will be taken, and that runoff water uh will not um again, you know, be worse than it is or it's addressed as part of the project.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, as you know, we we have to maintain water on our sites, that's a, that's a requirement, we'll do that. The other, the other good news is if you look at where those townhomes are, you know, that's all, that's all hard surface right now, right? So we're actually gonna be creating more uh green space, more places for the water to go, more um uh places for things to drain, creating more urban areas up there.
Okay, Consul, uh Vice President, I'm I'm fine, those are my only questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So uh again, our other Consuls are not on, so we're asking questions, or you know what? Give Mr. Manager a chance to jump in here.
Okay, I have three questions.
Sure.
Um so first, in your sort of reasonable thinking about a timeframe, when do you think you'd be submitting to our uh zoning board of appeals for a zoning group, or phase one?
I think our target is to um do zoning for the uh for the whole site. Uh and we're shooting to start the process late spring, early summer.
Ah, okay. Second question, the sixteen units that you're showing in the parking lot at Warren and Summit, they're shown as townhouses. There was a push from the city to try to get some homeownership piece in this development. I understand it's a long-term ground lease, but that doesn't necessarily pursue homeownership. It's happened before in ninety-nine year leases. So the question is, have you, or can you give some thought to a homeownership piece, particularly in those sixteen units that will go in that neighborhood?
We can, we can give a subtle conversation here, huh?
Yeah, it's uh, we definitely give a thought, it is complicated for the ground lease, as ever heard, we've entered the ground lease, um.
It exists, I was.
I don't disagree with you, um so we will, we will look at the.
My final question is really kind of a technical legal one, probably more for D K. There is some uh restriction on the uh the gift of this land to the state back in the eighteen, late eighteen hundreds. There was some talk that uh the D C A M thought they might have to go to the S J C to get some relief from the restrictions and the will of the trust. Is that happened? When does that stand? Have you determined you don't need to do that?
No, no, I believe there was an opinion, but um, yeah, I'm apologizing, I don't know all of the details that I can follow up with it. Um I believe that our general counsel's up and started.
There's an opinion that you don't need to do that or you will need to do that?
I don't think we need to, but I wanna follow up with you.
Okay.
Right?
Be, I'd love to say that.
Some of my colleagues are on the hall, if they never heard.
And if they.
But I I would love to follow with you tomorrow.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager, um. Consul Garcia, do you have any questions? She's great, she's nice. Okay, so I had just um two questions to follow up, you talked about the CAF Plaza and you talked about a little store there and you said it would be somewhat operated by a veteran. Will that, could that be like a ownership for a veteran? Or do it has to belong to someone or is it a renting? Like someone can come in and rent it, what preference are you a veteran, you have some kind of agreement that, you know, veteran preference, in it for rent, it's be a little small place for veterans or?
Yeah.
Do you own it?
Yeah, I I don't think we've fully fleshed out like the structure of it. I think the idea that it will be some sort of cafe and it would be great if it was a veteran run, if it was a veteran run business or if veterans on site or organized enough to actually run a cafe. Um it's uh supposed to be an amenity and in terms of who operates and who runs it, we haven't quite flushed that piece out yet.
Yeah, just, I just follow up on that, the, the concept was not to have a retail place on there and make money and hey, maybe we can get the veterans on it. It really was looking at the whole spectrum of services and stuff. You know, is this a, is this a potential opportunity to really empower the veterans to, you know, to 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 do something and have something here? If that's adds to the services, it's more of a service for the local piece than that's what I would be.
Okay, so in in that sense, so who would own it? So it would be a property of business that someone would own and they would allow veterans to volunteer? They would pay veterans to work there or?
Yeah, so so it would be, so this, you know, uh like everything, it would be a little, everything else on the, we have seen old, just like everything else on campus, that sounds up. We're gonna enter into the nine hundred ground lease.
Right.
With D C A M, so essentially what that means is that we own the buildings, right?
Okay, so you stock, you supply the, every necessity that's needed there and the veterans just hand it out?
No, the idea would be, it would be a, a small retail shop, but essentially it would be, you know, it would be a, a retail shop with a lease, but it really wouldn't, wouldn't be for income, but it would be, it would be like more of a, a rental, a lease, wouldn't necessarily stock it.
So a business would rent the space.
Okay, that's what I said, a business would rent the space, but preference a veteran and it's just, again, just to keep them active, engaged and not so much to go out and make a profit, you know, to go on and live off-site and.
Okay, that's cool, I just wanted to know, that's pretty interesting because I know the state has places like that and courthouses and state buildings and federal buildings for blind and for different types of folks, veterans and, you know, you come in and you know, you meet a criteria and they don't make a lot of money, but it gives them something to do, so that's really good, I I like that idea and that concept. Um and just the, the other question that I had was
the uh historic part, um you know, it's a lot of historic um character up there and I just wanted to ask you, who actually walked you through all the historic sites and, you know, what's really something that the veterans that really they appreciate, they love and we just can't move it? We just can't, you know, uh change it and and what's your thought on?
So uh we walk the site with um the soldier's home staff. Um but in thinking about your comments as now, at our first town hall meeting, uh there was a resident who actually wrote some notes for us, has some things that he wants to make sure that get easier and uh over the next several town hall meetings, we'll continue to solicit feedback from the veterans. I I don't know if we will and walk the site with residents, but uh we certainly kind of won't go having those town hall settings where we. but uh we certainly kind of will, will having those town hall settings, we'll be getting feedback from the residents as to what things are really important to them. Also, that is, they will build this for them, wanna make sure all we build works for them as opposed to kind of what's in our heads.
Okay, alright, um, I have no more questions at this time, you want to ask other questions?
How are you gonna notify the residents in the area or not directly at the Soldiers' Home?
Yes.
I think, I think one of the um items on our list is to figure out also how we have a neighborhood meeting. Um, and uh I think we'll work with the council whether that's like what was having makes sense. Um, so that's definitely one of the things on our list is that we must uh before we go through the official public process to have a neighborhood meeting, to make sure we have the feedback before we submit plans.
Okay.
It's actually something we had discussed previously, hoping councils like yourself that are in the area, like give us a little bit of feedback. It has been challenging and hoping, you know, we would love to invite people onto the campus and talk about it there, but um, the population is just too sensitive right now, so that's not a possibility. I've left the meeting. Welcome, you're being put on how we should host that and what would be um best for that residential community.
Okay, I'll come up with some thoughts.
So um, um, Counselor Vega Maldonado has a question on us. Counselor?
Hello, everyone, thank you. Um, Leo, I was actually gonna ask the same question in terms of outreach in in canvassing in the neighborhood, because I actually live right down the street from um the Soldiers' Home area. And and like, I, for the town hall, I I didn't receive any notifications. And I know that we are living in trying times and it's very difficult. But I think it's essential for us to at least get some type of fire notification um in, if, I mean, not in the mill, but at least in our doors. Or, you know, if you communicate with us and you give me the information, I don't mind doing that. I literally live on Clark Ave, so I'm totally fine with doing it. Um, I just think it's essential for our neighbors to know what's going on. Um, and they're very vocal when they're not aware of what's going on, so.
Yeah, so I would say, well, the good is is you didn't miss anything, right? So the town hall was was actually just for the, we're trying to be just with the the veterans there on the campus. We would have gone to meet with the veterans, get them, you know, speak to them, give them a chance to see who we were, have options where they could, are any issues or concerns? It's all part of the the process, right? So we we met with uh with the board of trustees, we met with the residents, we're coming with you. You know, and then the next will be, you know, getting out to the neighborhood. So that's, there's, 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 um, we're, we're at the very beginning of the process. We're trying to even understand, we only want to have a few more answers, maybe some of the questions, because it's gonna be a lot of, we don't know, we haven't seen that yet, we haven't done that, so. But yeah, certainly, it'll be a full community engagement process and and no one's missed any opportunity for any, uh, so.
Yeah, I just wanna point out, she's the district counselor up there and that she is a great source of resource. So she's also volunteering time. Her, you know, her efforts to help out to make sure the residents and council at large, he's, uh, he lives in the area. So, you know, we have a lot of memberships of the council, we had six online tonight with us here. Um, so we would like to, you know, also, if it's possible, if you have um a shot up this year, we can keep this or you can make sure that we get one, just in case the other counselors wanna look back at this um PowerPoint presentation. But I just wanted to just put that up and say that uh those two counselors there, they're they're day and night, they, we have other counselors, but those two particularly, and there are a lot other two at large counselors will be there, so. We do really like to get notification to our residents and make sure they're aware of what's going on.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll get everybody, in particular, we'll get your contact information specifically, make sure, you know, Carmen has something, something, yeah, make sure you're formally.
Counselor, go ahead.
Um, thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention is um language and, you know, making sure that um, aside from English, we have a lot of Spanish speakers in in the neighborhood. And so um just being aware of that and the cultural competence is really important and making sure that we are just, um, and so, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate that, we we actually, there's a, uh, working on a Blessed Sacrament Church in uh in Hyde Square. And uh there's a strong Spanish community, actually, one of our architects actually speaks Spanish, he often comes and is able to help with translations and things like that, same architect being uh for years. That's a good heads up, we'll make sure that we, everyone.
Thank you.
It's important.
Any more questions, any other counselors that have follow-up questions? Uh, and Mr. Manager, you have a closing statement? Uh, if you wanna, you know, first of all, we wanna get on actions about President, who's with us on Zoom here. I wanna just thank you folks for coming out tonight to just update us. Um, we are engaged and we're really, I'm excited about the opportunity to follow this project and to notify the residents of the city that this project will be taking place and.
I've left, I mean.
As you stated earlier, uh, hopefully by the um late spring, early summer, um, there'll be some kind of meetings, with the city hall going for permitting, long before. Boards, we'd like to uh make that notification known to the residents. And uh we, uh, I know myself and Counselor Robertson, um, we attended the first one, where it was talking about the trustees and what they had to do to make this available and possible. So we decided to uh get the answer back for the city manager's um question regarding what that decision was made, whether they had to go before, get a um, a agreement with the trustees or they can bypass it. But um we're grateful that you came over and um shared this information with us. And if you have any closing statement or remark, we will.
One thing I don't, I didn't want to answer, but one thing I did wanna, so that, the thing about this, uh, Counselor Maldonado, you were talking about too, we have the community, you know, reach, we have answers to. You know, Carmen should mention this, but we really cannot overstate this, like, this is the plan that we have and there's, it's a big historical component. So if you get, you know, getting getting sign off and and buying from the National Historic Commission and the National Art Service is really important. So some of this stuff may change as we go along, something you're gonna get to, so I wanted to, you know, let everybody know that, you know, as things change and evolve, we'll be, we'll be providing information. But that's what we're, we're really working through now, that's the big components, Carmen mentioned, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that was there, so.
Okay, I also have one more question, just came back to me, cause I saw.
Yeah, sure.
So you're the developer, but I also saw in the corner, you're also the management?
So, well, yes, we have, we have a, yes, a property manager for it.
Okay, now the property manager, will they be on site?
Yes.
They will, okay. Alright, thank you, um, so, um, any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time, I don't have to gather, but we, we need to adjourn, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.